Everyone, and welcome to the Tewksbury Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is April 25th, 2024, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. First on the agenda are our meeting minutes from February 29th and March 28th of 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 29th and March 28th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, new hearings. First on the agenda, we have Marie Boisvert on behalf of Christine Waddell and Bruce Murphy for request for repetition under section 16 MGL 40A and a variance under section 5.3.2 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for side setback to construct a mudroom within a 14 dot 6 by 6 farmer porch, as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 1558 Whipple Road, Assessor's Map 56, Lot 189, zoned residential. And the three voting members will be myself, Mike, and Rob. Name and address for the board, please.
Marie Boisvert with Rockies Construction.
Christine Waddell, 1558 Whipple Road.
And Bruce Murphy, 1558 Whipple Road.
Okay, do you want to talk on what you're trying to accomplish?
Yeah, so we were already here previously trying to build a mudroom addition on the side of their house, and it was denied, so we've made some changes to keep the setback at least 10 feet. So now we're building it, you know, at an angle to accommodate that lot line. And based on, you know, the pictures that should be in there, you can see, you know, you can see the property, so you can see exactly where it would be.
Yeah, I see the pictures were added to this.
Yeah.
They added a lot more detail this time, so thank you. This one here?
Uh, yeah, there was more than just one, yeah. Yeah, yep.
It's in the, uh... And I also see that there's a letter from the neighbor added.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, he's totally, totally on board.
Approving the neighbor all for the addition?
Yes.
The farmer's porch, is it only going to be in front of the mudroom?
Yes.
So the change is, obviously I wasn't here last month, or whenever it was you were here, the change is instead of going straight with the house line, you've angled it to get that 10 feet?
Yes.
What was it before, when it was denied?
It was the same as the front, it was 16. So we asked, what would we have to do to...
Right, but what was the measurement on that corner?
The corner was, I think it was 3.5.
3.5, alright. So you did a substantial change.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, and the structure has really changed from what we wanted, but if we can do it, that's what we'd be happy with.
Mike, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, we'd like to get, obviously, the back corner, you know, as close as we could, but 10 feet seemed like the distance that you guys wanted to see at the time.
Right, at a minimum. Do you have any questions before I open it up?
No, I don't have any questions right now.
It being a public hearing, does anybody have any thing they want to address, bring up? No? Okay. Mike, do you have any other questions?
Alright, just a quick question, when did you appear initially before the board?
It was November.
Last November, okay, thank you.
And we did not really understand the repetition thing, and I didn't know the process at that time. I didn't know you couldn't just go back and readjust, and I was hoping that from the board, we could get, you know, what could we do to, you know, make this pass? And we didn't know you'd have to go to, you know...
Right.
The last one.
Yeah.
Where?
Understood. Somebody want to make a motion to close both parts of the meeting?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I don't have any more questions.
Excuse me for your question? Thank you for the record, Community and Economic Development Planner Alexandra Louder. Just wanted to clarify that the board must take a vote first to agree that this is not subject to repetition, and that the applicant has in fact made enough substantial changes that it is considered a new application.
I see, okay.
And then the second vote can be on the variance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's how often they come to us.
Okay, I don't really understand what she just said, so...
We have to take a vote?
Right.
That it'll classify as a repetit- repetitious, repetitious?
Repetitious.
I know who you're...
That you've made a substantial change.
Okay.
And then we can vote to approve or deny it.
Right.
So we don't have to do anything?
Yeah, that's all on us.
Alright, good. Okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
I can't make that motion, I can't say the word.
Want to make the motion, Mike?
I'd like to make a motion for request of repetition under section 16 MGL 40A and the variance under, oh no, just the repetition.
No, just the repetition, yeah.
For the repetition?
Yep.
For the board.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And what was the other one?
On the variance.
On the actual variance now, yeah. So now you can read the rest of it.
Motion for variance under section 5.3.2 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for side setbacks to construct a mudroom with a 14.6 foot by 6 foot farmer's porch. As shown on plans filed with the board, said property is located at 1558 Whipple Road, Assessor's Map 56, Lot 189, zoned residential.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're approved?
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night, thank you. Alright, next on the docket is Daniel Horlander for variance under section 5.3.2 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for a front setback to construct a 12 by 21 two-story addition, as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 65 Two Mac Terrace, Assessor's Map 82, Lot 145, zoned residential. Name and address for the board, please?
Daniel Horlander, 65 Two Mac Terrace in Tewksbury.
Ada Horlander, 65 Two Mac Terrace, Tewksbury.
Can you speak on what you're trying to do, please?
Yes, add a house addition on the right side of the road, on the Walcott side, 12 by 21, two and a half stories. And with the being on the corner, usually we have to be at, you know, 25 feet from front and side, so this is asking for a variance for 15.9 feet on the right side.
The voting members on this is Joe, Mike, and myself. Do you guys have any questions? I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
What's stopping you from putting it on the other side?
Isn't it, you have all your utilities?
Yeah.
The propane tank?
Yeah, there's the ACs, the propane tank, electric, and the flow of the house would be...
We'd have to cut a hallway, basically, right?
Yeah, it's a garage on the first floor on the left side, and so...
We're looking for a room for cars, but there's a room for people.
So this... Let me look back at your house. Okay, I didn't catch the garage.
Being a public hearing? Oh, you have one, I'm sorry.
So is your garage under your dining room?
Yep.
Alright, I'm okay.
Yep?
Yep, I'm okay.
Being a public hearing, would you like to open it up? Does anybody add anything? No? Okay. Both parts? Am I talking too much?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll move to variance under section 5.3.2 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for a front setback to construct a 12-foot by 21-foot two-story addition, as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 65 Two Mac Terrace, Assessor's Map 82, Lot 145, zoned residential.
In favor of that?
Second, okay. All in favor?
Second that. Aye.
Thank you so much.
Next is Michael J. De Silva Martins for variance under section 5.3.2 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for a side setback to construct a 6 by 12 side porch with roof, as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 19 Regis Road, Assessor's Map 103, Lot 15, zoned residential. Name and address for the board, please?
Michelle De Silva Martins, 19 Regis Road.
Regis Road, 19 Regis Road.
Okay, can you talk a little bit about what you're doing?
Good evening, thank you for consideration of this variance before you. We are seeking to extend a side steps, an additional six feet from where it stands and provide a shelter cover over that. And in essence, a mini porch in the entrance that the property currently exists. I did provide some pictures that were taken today that I would like to provide to the board, if that's my approach.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you can see, as reflected on the picture, this property, when I purchased in 2013, those stairs are existing to the property, it's the only way of entrance into that location. What we are proposing is extending that stairs, if you look onto the second page, to the end of the property, as it, the end of the property on the picture number two, and enclose that area, no further extending the roof or deck beyond what the already existence, six feet is already on the plan. As to, if you, if I can bring your attention to photo number three, it already shows where the post would be, which would be already existing to the, what I would call grandfathered-in steps, that's the entrance to that location. Additionally, the nearest, my adjacent neighbor would be 17 Regis Road. The nearest structural to that location is, would be page number four, which is the tennis court. So there's no actual building directly where the variance stand. The white fence that's depicted on the pictures is already the fence for my neighbor, 17 on Regis Road. You can also see through the pictures that the distance to the nearest structure, which is clearly over, it's, this is a picture taken on the top of the stairs, looking onto my adjacent neighbor, so the nearest structure is at least 50 feet away from the location where we're trying to put the overhang on this proposed variance. And as for, excuse me, just one second. Again, we are not looking to increase it laterally, it's already not meeting regulations based on when it was built, that's the stairs that were original to the house, when, at least since I've known it, based on the look, and it looks very, an older set of stairs. We are also, there's nothing that's going to obstruct the view of, at least it's our position, that there's nothing that obstructs the view of my adjacent neighbor, there's not going to affect their shading, it's all within the property already that is my property, 19 Regis Road. We are looking, in essence, this will provide shelter, neighbor to be able to enter the house, wind, groceries coming in with kids, and in essence, what we're looking to do is just extend that to the end and put a roof over that, within the six feet that's already existing of this current stairs.
Do you have any pictures of what's there now? You were very careful to take pictures of the stairs and the stairs and the post.
Yes, I have the pictures of the, on your phone. They have started, I contracted Sandra's Construction to do this. They were supposed to take out a permit. They brought in their man on Friday, I believe around 11:00, and so there is existing structure. There's nothing been done since the town, you have, oh, yep, may I approach with a photo?
Yes, please.
Sure.
And the three voting members on this, just to be clear, is Rob, Joe, and Mike.
And that's what's there now?
That's the proposal, and I just need to create a roof over it, but...
That's, that's a proposal, or that's what's there now? How did you get a picture of a proposal?
It hasn't been completed, that's what was placed on the morning of.
So it's been started?
It's been started, the contractor did not full cover it, so...
What was there before? Just the stairs?
Just the stairs. The only existence are these two poles, the poles and the overhang over the...
Because I was... Yes, I was looking at, like, this picture. What's that?
That's, that's...
That's that?
That's that.
That's what they already built?
Correct.
So in the big picture, the pole that you see in there is what they've already built? On the top.
So, I guess, so the existing, this is what was there, and then you just gave this...
So there's nothing on top, there was nothing...
Nothing, nothing there before.
Why don't we, why don't we look at the picture and then get her back on mic?
Yeah, hold on, look at the picture, and then we got to give her back, so she can get back on the mic.
So, so existence to the property is the stairs, the solid...
Just the stairs.
Just the stairs.
The proposal was to add the roof line and...
Over it.
Right, over it, and the pole, but they started it before they grabbed the...
The permit.
So it's, that's why the structure's already started.
Did you get a stop work order?
Yes.
When did you receive that?
On, listen to me.
August 11:00. It was around 11:00 a.m., yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the contractor left the workers over there and left to work on the permits and stuff, but we didn't know about the setback situation, and, yeah, that's where we received the notice from Leo, yeah.
Understand.
Pretty much.
And that platform on your stairs, existing stairs, is six feet?
It's six feet, exactly, which we would not encroach any further on the setback, which was the 15.
Okay. And then you have here, like, there's a shaded area here, is your...
That's a second, there's a separate application for that, that front porch has nothing...
So you're only going to this point right now?
I'm just discussing that, correct, because that one has been opened as a result of the stop order.
Yep.
Yeah.
That was part of the project as well.
Right.
Do you know when the house was built, what year?
19, if I, I believe, 1969, '70, around there.
Was that door original to the house that you know of?
To my knowledge, it is.
How many doors lead in and out of the house?
Three.
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 Yeah.
Where does this one go?
This is when you drive up, that is the side door, there's a front door, and then there is a back door.
Where does that lead into?
This side door? The kitchen, kitchen, dining room, the main, like, living areas that we use.
I guess I'm just a little confused why this isn't an existing non-conforming, because you're, obviously, those steps are six and a half feet off the property line. Right? So I'm thinking that house couldn't have even been built in the 70s at six and a half feet off the property line. And I don't, I don't see any other variances here. You understand what I'm saying? You're coming for a variance to be six and a half feet off the property line?
Yeah.
For something that's already there?
Well, the reason is, it's because I believe, based on when he applied or came in and explained that it would have been covering until the end, not just the block, the six feet?
You don't understand my statement. You have stairs that have already been there, right?
Correct.
You said the stairs have always been there?
Yep.
The stairs are six and a half feet away from the property line?
Yes.
Why isn't there already a variance from 1969?
I don't know, I can't answer that.
That's why I asked how many doors. Was that door added somewhere along the line?
Later on, Mike.
That I cannot answer, I can only answer up to what I, what I've acquired the house.
I understand. And you bought it in 2018?
No, I bought it in 2000, in August of 2013.
2013, maybe I misread it.
There was a conveyance in 2018, maybe that's why, but it's, I'm part of that conveyance, continued.
Excuse me, so that distance here from the edge to the fence is six and a half feet?
Yes. Actually, 7.2. According to this, well, yeah, so it says that according to the scale, 13.2 is from the edge of the house to the fence. The stairs are six feet, so that's 7.2, at least if my math is correct. The house itself is of, the house itself is not within the setback of the 15, at least the farthest corner of the house, so maybe that's the reason why, I'm just speculating here. There is so much land, and they put the house there.
Do you gentlemen have any more questions before I open it up?
I do not.
I'd like to look back and see what zoning was in 1964, when the house was built, whenever it was. I do. You can still open it to the public, you just can't close it.
As being an open hearing, I'd like to open it up to anybody that has any questions, issues. Please go to the microphone and state your name and address for the board, please.
Hi, I'm Joe Carroll.
Hi, Joe.
Representing my brother John, who can't be here, he's the butler at 17 Regis Road.
Your address?
I'm 31 Kirkland Drive in Andover. So John provided a letter, and I'd like to know if you have it, or if you don't, we can get you copies.
We do, it's in the packet.
Have you all been able to read it?
I've read it.
Does anybody need me to read it?
Yeah, if you want.
If you'd like, you're welcome to.
Well, if you've all read it, I'm not going to bore everybody with it, but I would like to go through a couple of things. John's a builder, he's been a builder for a number of years here in Tewksbury. He's built or refurbished over 200 homes. He's had to apply for variances himself. This one, I'm also a builder, we don't think applies, okay? You can see from the back corner of that house, it's already under the 15-foot setback. The stairs, they've been existing, they don't need to be covered. There's absolutely no reason to come out another six and a half feet and cover them. This is an attorney that owns the house. She knows better than to put up a structure and ask for forgiveness. I recommend that you turn this down, and you go back to the Buildings Department and have it removed. Any questions?
I have none.
I don't have any. Nope, I don't have any. Nope.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Joe, yes? Name and address, please, for the board.
My name's Joe Carter. I live at Eighteen Regis Road, um, across the street, direct to butchers to the property. So I guess if you've read the letter, you kind of know what some of the, kind of the Carroll's concerns are. Um, I do share some of those concerns. Kind of the letter, they highlight a lot of things. And what I wanna make sure that we have here is just that everyone's playing under the same rules and that everyone has to go through the same process. Last year, maybe two years ago, it's all blurring together. But, um, I had to come before the Conservation Board because I was extending my deck out two additional feet and it came within the fifty feet mark. I had to put an ad in the paper. I had to come before the Conservation Committee and a couple hundred dollars out of pocket for what I would say is probably, um, one of the easier decisions they've had to make. You know, I was making my deck safer. We weren't impinging on anything, no lot lines, anything like that. But, um, if I'm having to go through this process, I just wanna make sure that everyone is playing by the same rules and everyone has to go through the process. So of the different things identified within the letter, I don't know what's been pulled for permits, for variances. But, um, I just wanna make sure that everyone's playing by the same rules. Because when I'm doing something for my house, I wanna make sure that all my neighbors are doing the same thing and following the same process and playing by the same set of rules. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I would like to rebut some of the statements, if possible.
I'm sure you'll have to speak to the board, though.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm, I'm rebutting to you, yes, just making. So as to the conformance, I have not seen this letter. I have no, I, I have not seen it. I do not currently live on the property. This is the individual that currently lives on the property. The, when the, when the, when I was informed of this request, uh, the, the contractor was supposed to request the permit. That was part of the contractor obligation. We were not aware that he was starting on that day. It was not done in an effort to conceal or, or, or try to pull one over on anybody. And so, again, it is, we are aware of, of the error. The stop order was issued. We have fully complied with. And we are before the board and all of the, the permits for all of the plans that are in effect for this home are before, uh, the Board of Tewksbury.
Who filed for the permit for the farmer's porch?
The contractor.
Same contractor?
Yes. He should have known better, yes.
And he, he missed part of his job?
I cannot, I cannot tell you. I can't tell you he should have. Uh, again, I was not present on the day that the work was to be started. But our understanding was that a permit would have been pulled.
I'm trying to find that print again. Lot of papers. So the, the contractor pulled the permit. And you said it's not, not in front of the board now, but there's a permit out there for a farmer's porch?
Correct. And I can give you a permit number if you'd like.
There it is, that's the one I'm looking for.
Permit number. It is BP dash twenty-three, one, five, four, four.
Who drew this print? The only print we have.
The surveyor.
When?
Uh, the date on, I believe, is on there.
Because it says existing roof overhang. How long ago did they build this overhang?
Overhang, carbon.
Say again?
The overhang.
Are you talking about the overhang that?
The one that we're talking about, the roof you wanna build?
This was done on, what's the date? It was ex colocata, sakicju.
We're making adjustments on the, on the, uh, that's not there. Because he made, uh, probably like three or, for a new set of, uh, survey plans and then, uh, but this has got enough data before we got the permit, they showed.
What print did you use for the farmer's porch?
This one, I don't know if that's the same one you have.
Does it have a pink copy of, of, yeah?
Yeah, I got, I got the updated one that's been filed on.
This one was drawn in March.
Say again?
This one that I'm looking at?
Yeah, this is not the one, uh, the one they updated. They updated on the portal, the right one.
It has proposed farmer's porch.
Yeah.
And the roof that we're talking about is listed as existing.
Yeah, you understand. He, he probably, on this one, is the updated one. Let me see the date. This one is, um, uh, October nineteenth, the one that I have. He, he drew the same thing over here. He probably mean the steps, but I, it, it says, uh, existing overhang.
No, it clearly says existing roof overhang over existing steps.
Yes, that, that's why he drew over here, yes.
And you have it back in October?
Yeah, the updated one's back in October, uh, October nineteenth. The one being filed.
Can I have that permit number again? The permit number you gave me?
Yes. Permit number is BP twenty-three.
Say it again?
BP twenty-three, one, five, four, four.
I have no more questions.
Sorry, we're not closing the room.
I would like to continue. Because I'd like to look at this permit. I'd like to look at the print that basically looked at permit.
All right, so we're not closing the hearing. We're going to extend it out to next month. Because there are some things we wanna look at, like the permit, the, um.
One more question.
Sure.
Is this, um, are these steps and roof easily seen from the street? Do I have to go on your property to look at it?
Nope. It's easy, you can see it from the streets.
All right, so we're gonna do a sidewalk. We're going to pull, we're going to?
We're not gonna do a sidewalk.
You're not gonna do a sidewalk?
I'm gonna drive by and look from the street.
Are you just gonna drive by? All right, so we're just gonna drive by and look at it. And, um, Rob and whomever else can go look at the permit and, um, then we'll review it next month.
I have one more question?
Sure.
When you received the original permit, or you thought they, did they clearly post it?
I would have to relate to him because he was the one, yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Was it, was it or not posted?
Yes, this is, um, actually, the side one was part of the, of, of the same permit. And then, one has been, uh, on hold because of this hearing. And then, when you got the new one, we got the printed copy and incident from window, the, for the farmer.
You had one there, what you're saying?
Say again?
Had one there before? When they came and put the roof, the, the temporary spot there, was there a?
No, the permits being issued. The permit, that, the, the existing permit right now, it's?
He just wants to know whether the roof was existing when the permit, when the original permit from the farmer's porch? Is that what you're asking? Was it there?
No.
Okay.
And the second question is there when, when now?
Yeah, it's there now. It's there now, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we know, gotta be posted.
He said that the roof that we're talking about over the stairs was part of the farmer's porch permit, or so we thought.
Yeah, intention.
He was the one who took him out. And the, the house is under my name.
I understand that.
So that's why I'm referring to when, the reason why I'm asking is because I'm not living on the property. So I don't know when it was actually put, just to understand.
I'm following along.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, excuse me, sorry.
You, you told her believed that that roof was part of the farmer's porch permit, was one big?
It was, it was intended.
That's why I wanna look at the permit.
Yeah, it was intended to be, but that got on hold because of the setback and stuff. And then, uh, the contractor.
Maybe it got put on hold because the guy who drew your print said it was existing.
Yeah. I don't know if that was for the reason, but I, I hear the reason was for the setback. Then it has to be for the variance, and they told me. And then, we start a new permit application until that's on hold since October last year. Then we start the application for the new building permit, which is, it's got approved. They got, um, through the survey and every steps, and it being approved. But it's a different number.
So now you're looking to do two permits?
It's gonna be a two, two permits.
For the farmer's porch that conforms?
That's correct.
You got a permit by right. And you're looking for a second permit to do the overhang above the stairs that's already done?
To continue with that, yes.
I understand. All right.
So we're going to push this out for next month.
I'd like to make a motion to continue.
Second?
Seconding.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, see you in a month.
Thank you for your time.
Next is John J. McKenna on behalf of Margno Homes, care of Dave Sawyer, for a variance under section five dot three dot two of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for front setbacks to build a new twenty-six by twenty-six single-family home with an attached twelve by sixteen deck, as shown on files planned with the board. Said property is located at one-twenty-nine Marshall Street, assessors map thirty-three, lot ten, zone residential. And the three voting members is, are Mike, Rob, and myself. Name and address for the board, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. John McKenna, five seventy-two Boston Road, suite six. Bill Rickamassam, the attorney, the applicant, Mangano Homes, John Mangano, and the owner, Mr. Sawyer. So we're here for an application for a variance for the front setback requirement. We applied for a permit and was denied by the, uh, Building Inspector and requiring that front, uh, requires a twenty-five-foot front setback. The hardship is based upon the soil conditions and the topography of, of the property. Uh, the odd-shaped lot, it's like a, a, as you see from the plan, it's like a power hologram on a square.
Rambus.
Rambus. I think it's power hologram, me and him are gonna start to differ on that. But they went to the Conservation Commission and had, uh, the proposed house meets the twenty-five-foot setback. But it has to be moved forward. The, the wetlands require that it can't be moved further in the back. It could have meant that rear setback, having not been the, the soil conditions there. The existing house is, is in, uh, it should, it has to be taken down. The Board of Health has, uh, sent out a notice that it's not habitable. Uh, the existing house is, is further closer to the street. This will decrease, uh, the current nonconformity. And, uh, doesn't really derogate from the intent of the bylaw as the front setback is from the, from the property line is fourteen feet. But because of the right-of-way is so wide and it's not all used, the edge of pavement is an additional ten feet. So it's twenty-four feet from the edge of pavement. So, uh, technically, you have to legally, you go by the lot line. But when you look from the street, it looks further back because from the edge of the pavement. So, uh, the applicant is here requesting a variance for the front setback. Uh, as stated in the doubt by Leo of the Building Department, based upon the hardships from the soil conditions and the shape of the lot, uh, this is the best spot that we can put the house with the consideration and respect for the wetlands and also make it a, uh, improved, uh, location in existence on the house. Uh, and make a nice new house there to replace the one that's currently being sited by the Board of Health. Uh, Mr. Mangano's here. Uh, we also have Representative, uh, Mangano Homes, the, the broker. We spoke to all the neighbors. They're all in favor of a new house going in there. Uh, nobody's here, I don't think they just spoke in favor. But we're here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
You don't have any pictures of what's there now?
I think, um, Richard, did you have a picture of what was there now?
Just on his phone.
Do you wanna show it to him? You good, do you may approach?
Yes, please.
Show the board the existing picture that you saw. It's a, it's a small, um, bungalow-type house, one-story, that was, roofs caving in. It was built around nineteen forty-two, prior to zoning, according to the, uh, current records at the Town Hall. We approached the, the Building Inspector as to whether it was a pre-existing nonconforming. And he, he said we need a variance. He denied it and sent us here for that, rather than a special permit finding that it's not pre-existing nonconforming.
When was the existing house built?
According to the assessors' records, prior to zoning in nineteen forty-two.
So it would be existing nonconforming, uh, not existing nonconforming?
We go with the denial by the, uh, Building Inspector, just applied for the variance.
And that existing house now, how big is it, roughly?
It's odd-shaped.
Give or take? Twenty by ten?
No, it's bigger than that.
Bigger than that. Existing dwelling, yet it is odd-shaped, it was?
It's almost forty feet wide.
It's wider than the existing. The exist, the, the proposed one is twenty-six. It's probably like thirty-eight or forty. It was narrow and came closer to the street.
What print are you looking at? Is it on here somewhere and I just don't see it?
This is the existing house here. So it comes up here and down, it goes to the back line here.
So this.
Like the gray line here.
This.
Yeah. Exactly.
All right, I understand now. Yeah, now I get it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. You guys are done.
Yep.
You do know.
That is a little tough to read.
That's what I was hoping for.
Thank you. Thank you for putting that out.
So now, on your print, where it says in the front there, twenty-one point five, underneath that, in that purply-pink?
Yeah.
Is that driveway? The beginning of the new house would be the red?
Yes, that's correct. And that's all been proposed and submitted to the order, uh, under an order conditions notice of intent. So, the impervious service has been calculated with the Conservation Commission and all that calculations have been filed and approved and recorded. They went there first before getting the variance to see if it actually could even be plausible to do. And also, the improvement to the property too, there's a concrete portion in the back within the buffer that will be moved. So there'll be several improvements to the property to bring it in compliance with current Conservation Commission requirements. Bring it up to code, avoid a safety hazard, and provide much-needed housing. As we all know, the housing is, is a tough, uh, one of the toughest, uh, issues that this generation is gonna face.
Do you have any questions? Okay, it being a public hearing, if anybody wants to approach the podium? Okay, somebody wanna make a motion?
We can close both paths of the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, somebody, questions? No closing up? Make a motion?
Move for a motion of variance under section five point, uh, three point two in the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for front setbacks to build a new twenty-six-foot by twenty-six-foot, uh, single-family home with attached twelve-foot by sixteen-foot deck, as shown on plans filed with its board. Said property is located at one-twenty-nine Marshall Street, assessors map thirty-three, lot, uh, ten, zoned residential.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. The, uh, next, our, um, on the docket is the correspondence for joint stipulation of dismissal for Foster Lane.
I think it's just informational.
Yeah, it's just saying that that's done. That that was dismissed.
Yep.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.